... meeting for the city of Royal Oak. Let's start with introducing ourselves to my left.
Gary Casada.
Mike Fournier.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twing.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you, we have a quorum. So, item B is the approval of minutes for July 10th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a support?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Casada, support by Mr. Klooster, any discussion? Not seeing all those in favor of approving the minutes for July 10th, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to public comment on non-agenda items. So, this is item C, anything that's, if there's anybody here that'd like to comment on anything not on the agenda. Raise your hand, step forward. Okay, not seen, we'll close that. Public comment on non-agenda items, we'll move along to old business, item D. This is a public hearing for zoning ordinance tax amendments for food trucks and temporary or transient outdoor sales. Mr. Twing.
Well, the planning commission discussed this at your July meeting, and a public hearing was held then and closed, so technically there's not a public hearing this evening, but the planning commission does generally allow comment on agenda items when that item is up. So, the actual public hearing on the tax amendment occurred last month. With that, last month you postponed action for a recommendation to the city commission on this item, and asked staff to forward the draft tax amendments to the DDA Downtown Development Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Restaurant Association for comment and input. You have received communications back from all three of those, plus one other individual, as part of, been added to your packet. I won't read those, but they're there for your review and items. I won't, I won't go through the item again, I think everyone is aware of what was being proposed. If you've got questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Other questions? Mr. Casada?
Yeah, I, I'm afraid, I, I would like you to go through some of the reasoning, and first, well, let's start with this. What was the problem that you tried to solve with these amendments? Because some of the commentary indicates that there's, at least with the central business districts, there's a very narrow issue there. For myself, when I look at this, it seems like there's a much broader issue, because the central business district is not where I would think we would find food trucks and people wanting to have food trucks. So, can you just start off by explaining the problem that you were presented with when you were making these tax amendments?
Well, this is not a staff-driven request.
Okay.
This is not coming from the planning division. The planning division was directed to put this together and present it and move it forward, so I don't have a problem that I'm trying to solve with it from the planning division's end. We were asked to address this and allow, potentially allow food trucks in the CBD, and under certain criteria and provisions. And with that direction, we drafted disordnance for your consideration.
Yeah, I can tell you, the city commission has been petitioned by residents and a couple of business owners about the viability of food trucks. I mean, some people have mentioned, okay, well, Ferndale has food trucks, they have that little food truck station off on Nine Mile. We have some businesses that are technically in the central business district that, you know, would be interested in having a food truck from time to time. And so, it was brought to the city commission, and we wanted to explore the idea a little further, but it has to go through planning first. Our thought and, and idea was, you know, certainly we don't want to see a proliferation of food trucks throughout our downtown or central business district. We don't want to, you know, have that, I don't want to call it food pollution, but, you know, having a truck on public property, you know, competing, so to speak, with the restaurants. But, in certain cases, does it make sense to experiment and see in certain areas if certain establishments that do serve alcohol can also serve food on occasion to complement their, their, their product? And so, that's sort of the genesis of all of this, to where, instead of just opening up the door, is there a way to try it out, especially on Fourth Street, where you do have some establishments there that, you know, quite frankly, distill their own beverages, and they don't, the closest restaurant, I think, is the In-Season Cafe in that area. And so, the commission wanted to explore it, and get the feedback from the planning commission, and see if it moved forward.
Did the, did the city commission get petitioned by people outside, you know, who had interests outside, like up and down Woodward, or anyplace like that, that say, hey, I want to consider a food truck?
I didn't, personally, I can't speak for, you know, one or two other commissioners that have been approached with this. I've been petitioned personally by residents, you know, asking, inquiring, you know, what our position and policy is on food trucks, and, you know, is there a reason why we can't have them in certain areas of the city, or what are the rules regarding it? And so, coupled with the fact that some, some business owners did petition and say, hey, you know, we want to have food trucks, it makes sense for our business, it's a unique business model, how do we do that in, in a way that, you know, respects a unique business model, that doesn't create a proliferation of food trucks?
Well, thank you. I, I was a little, honestly, I was a little perplexed by the, by the amendments, because, you know, if, if you're approached by somebody, say, hey, here's my prom, I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a distillery, but I don't have a, I don't have a kitchen, and I'd like to, I'd like to have this variety, and, and for my customers. That's one problem. I have been over, it's called Fleet, I don't want to advertise for, for a Ferndale outfit, but I went over there, it's more like a, it seems to me more like a car hop place, in the manner of a car hop place, I could see that happening on Woodward, that's not going to happen in the, in our central business district, I don't think.
No.
But, I don't want to get off the track, I was a little perplexed, I'm not sure, what's the difference, for instance, a Good Humor truck runs up and down the street, but we wouldn't want a taco truck maybe, or a hot dog truck running up and down the street. I don't, Tim, how does a, how does a Good Humor get a license? That's a totally separate thing, that's not a food truck.
Right.
What is it?
And I guess, go back to your first question, there are districts that allow transient merchants currently, and right now, food trucks are covered under the transient merchant provisions and the ordinance. So, if someone on Woodward, or one of the zoning districts that allows transient merchants as a, as a special land use, they can apply. Most of the flower, Christmas tree, the temporary type things are considered transient merchants, because they can come and go, and so they fall under that category. Currently, that's where food trucks fall, and staff treats them. Given the directive, or the criteria that, to allow them to get into the CBD is food trucks without the other types of transient merchants, we had to define it and separate it from the other transient merchants. Otherwise, if we just said transient merchants were now potentially allowed in the CBD under this, it would be any of those as well. So, part of the reason we wrote the provision the way we did was to separate food trucks out, without opening a door to everything else as well.
All right, can I, can I, can I get a, just to go back on the Good Humor truck, is that, what license is that? Just so I know the difference.
It's probably more under the peddler license.
Okay.
Transient merchant, because we don't allow transient merchants into public right-of-way, anywhere.
That's what it says here, that's why I was a little perplexed, because that, I mean, if, if I had a-
You have a right-
If I had a taco truck, could I run up and down the street if I had a peddler's license?
Right.
I could.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. But, we are associating this, obviously, with planning, land use, because we're assuming that this use is going to be either extended period, or semi-permanent, if it's going to be in, you know, with a distillery. Is that, is that what we're assuming?
Right. The distinction I would make is, in the peddlers, they're constantly moving. They're not sitting in a particular location in the public right-of-way. Under the transient merchants, they're picking a location, they're submitting a site plan that shows they comply with parking and other requirements, and coming and going, and it's at that location, and it might be there, and part of their plan of operation would identify for how long.
Okay.
Next year, if they wanted to do the same thing, or when it went away, they could reestablish it, based on whether you granted the special land use approval or not. It's sep, it's different than a special event permit as well, because right now, you'll see special events issued through the city that are very short in period.
Yeah, we talked about that last time.
And, and so, they, you can do that right now, but it's a very limited operation. This is intended to be more, in terms of length, and then reoccurring every year afterwards.
Now, I, I don't, just asking questions, just for the record, so I, I mean, I want to inform myself, Red Coat Tavern, I think, I see, they have like, sometimes they put their own food truck out, I think that's what they do, but, but this, if it, if it's on your own property, that doesn't count, it has to be somebody who doesn't, who, who isn't owning and operating that property, it's a third party coming in, yes?
No.
No?
Nope.
So-
Could be, could be Red Coat Tavern violating the ordinance.
Okay, well, see, you've, you've told me that before, sometimes they say, well, why, what about that? And you say, well, they're violating the ordinance. So, if that's the case, so, I, I, what I understood when I read this, is that it doesn't apply if you put your own food truck on your own parking lot, it doesn't count, but you're saying, you're saying that this would apply?
Yeah, it would, it would, doesn't matter who's running it.
Well, I noticed also that there's a, there's a green space buffer requirement, and I know that not all the places that have Christmas trees have the green space, so, they're also violating-
Well, again, you, as a planning commission, will see as part of your special land use approval, because every transient merchant goes through an initial site plan, special land use approval, and as you know, you have the ability to waive and require certain requirements. So, the ordinance might start out with providing screening, but then it gives you the permission, as the planning commission, to modify that. So, any approved transient merchant that's out there would have gone through that site plan approval, and as long as they reactivate it on an annual basis the same way, we, we let them.
Okay, some of those probably, I've never seen one, so they must have happened long before I was here.
There's not many sites that are still available to run a transient merchant.
Oh, okay. Just real quick, I think I know the answer to this, but, we're going to have a park, we're going to have a Central Park, right? And we're going to have concerts in the park. And if the downtown restaurants wanted to bring a food cart over, that's not the same thing, then, that would be a peddler's license or something.
It would probably fall under a special event permit.
If they, if they had a cart and they rolled it over to the concert, that's what I'm talking about.
Peddler, if, if it's a particular peddler, yes, and, and it's pretty hard to get a peddler's license in downtown.
Well, that's a, that's a good question, because we're going to have a Central Park with concerts, and we've got a bunch of restaurants, I'm just thinking, somebody's probably going to want to do that, they're going to want to bring their food out to the people who are on the lawn, listen to the concert. But that, this isn't addressed at all.
Whoever's running the concert's probably going to get a special event permit, as part of that, to have whatever food they want to have there.
Okay, and I can-
But, for you to just show up with a peddler and push hot dogs isn't going to be allowed.
Well, I wouldn't do it, but, I'm, I'm just saying, somebody might want to do it, especially with all the restaurants. And I would also think that somebody may want to pull a food truck up on Third Street, or Troy Street, or whatever, and, and sell, but they would, you know, that's something that I think would happen, would add to the spice and variety of an event downtown, but that's, I don't know how that's-
It's not covered by this, again, because it's in the public right-of-way? This isn't dealing with anything in the public right-of-way. This is all private property, it has to be on your own property, you have to have the property to do it. Again, if you're, if you're running an individual activity as a special event, a concert in a park, you can apply as part of your special event, not only to have the music, but also to have food service.
Okay, and, and so, so right now, somebody who had a distillery could put in for a special event permit, and maybe half a dozen times a year, they could have a food truck, and that, that's our, is that already going on?
Yes.
Okay, and so-
Sure it is.
What we're talking about now is saying, okay, we're going to give you a special land permit, and expect you to be there 10 months of the year, or nine months of-
But, the benefit to it is, they don't have to keep coming back and asking for the special event permit, they're just entitled to do it. Long as they set it up based on how it was approved by the planning commission initially, they could do it whenever they wanted to do it.
Tim, what if, what if one of the coffee places wanted to have a coffee cart? There's no food on it, there's just beverages, coffee beverages, hot chocolate, or something like that. How would that fit in, would it fit into this at all, or is that something-
In the CBD?
Yeah.
No, wouldn't fit into this at all.
Okay, so-
Well, one of the provisions in the back is, you have to have a liquor license in order to be considered to do this.
For this, okay. So, if they wanted to have a coffee cart on the sidewalk-
Well, again, you're in the public right-of-way, and this doesn't deal with, you can't be in the public right-of-way.
Different, how would you get a permit if you wanted to have a coffee cart?
I'm going to say, in the 27 years I've been here, no one has gotten one, so you're not going to get one under the current provisions.
Okay, so there's no, there's no ability to-
No, you can go through a sidewalk cafe and put a cafe out there, but to actually put a pushcart out there and move from it, it hasn't happened.
Mr. Casada?
Just a clarification, I thought I had read this, 7708 definitions, it says, temporary transient outdoor sales is the definition, it says, "Commercial activities, blah, blah, outside an enclosed building on a non-permanent basis by persons other than the owner or occupant of the premises." And then it lists things like Christmas tree sales, food trucks, windshield repair. So, if I read 7708 correctly, then-
I think it's open to either. Generally, a food truck isn't going to be owned by the same establishment, but I think the intent there is to let whoever's doing it, and if we need to wordsmith that, we'll change that.
Well, it might be better to, to leave it, because the distillery could buy themselves a food truck, and that would-
Right.
-solve their problem.
But generally, from a zoning standpoint, you're not concerned with who owns it, who's running it. You're concerned with the use and the activity.
Okay, just reading the statute.
I know. Didn't say it was perfect yet.
Well, yeah, and I'm not sure either, that's what I'm trying to educate myself, I mean, you're, this is, this is, this is one of those things, I, if I may say, it seems like there's a stab being taken here, I, I'm not terribly comfortable with how this pans out, I don't know that we've, I know we've heard the central business district interests have, have responded negatively to the idea, but there's a lot, it's, it's, like I said, it seems to me, for right now, right here, right now, if we're going to have people interested in food trucks, they're not going to be in the central business district, in fact, I mentioned one earlier, I had somebody come to me, ask about putting a park on, on Woodward. So, I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet now, but I'm just saying, I'm a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with what we have here, I'm not sure it fits what the problem is, if there is a problem.
Any other questions, Mr. Twing? What kind of action do you-
Well, you, it's a draft for your consideration, I know there are some of the representatives that sent you a letter, letters here this evening, if you'd like to hear from them, that's fine, I know you closed the public hearing, but the planning commission generally does allow comment as items come up as well. There is, if you're supportive of it, you would pass a resolution recommending approval to the city commission. If you're, have objections to it, you'd have a resolution recommending against it. If you've got revisions, you can suggest those revisions, and we can redraft, as you did last month, if you need more time to consider, you can take an action to postpone again.
So, we have, we have four letters in the packet here, am I seeing that correctly?
Yes.
In the form of email, and, okay. What's the pleasure of the commission? Should we open the public hearing back up?
I'm okay with that. People came out tonight, they should be heard.
I would be in favor, certainly.
Yeah, I would too. Okay, if there's no other questions for Mr. Twing, then let's open the public hearing back up, is there anyone here who would like to speak on this? Yes, just need your name?
Sure, Liz Morton, I'm a RTOI, okay. Hi. Thank you for allowing, for the time and consideration of others' thoughts on this matter. My name's Liz Morton, and I'm with Lily Seafood, I'm Washington.
Okay.
And to shorten our time here tonight, and get us all home to our families quicker, I'm on the, I'm a board member of the Restaurant, Royal Oak Restaurant Association, and as such, my voice is representing 39 of the members. So, we, the Royal Oak Restaurant Association, stand with the Royal Oak Downtown Development Authority, and the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce, to vehemently oppose the changing and altering of the verbiage of this ordinance, allowing food trucks into the CBD, as, you know, on this proposed ordinance. As a group, we would never discourage a business to try to grow, but as if it makes sense, and here's why we don't support it. The verbiage changes, the verbiage change currently helps only one, possibly two, particular businesses. How does changing an ordinance that does not benefit the greater good, but just singular, but one singular entity make any sense? Also, to remove food trucks from the subcategory of transient vendors, somewhat silly, since it is the most literally, literal sense of the term. They distribute their product for money in a mobile device, they pay no taxes to the city, and they have no anchor to the community at all. If a business is holding a liquor license, and wants to offer food, and has the space to house an outside vendor, then they certainly have the space to build a kitchen, just as the rest of us have done, in the Royal Oak Restaurant Association. They should have to deal with the daily maintenance upkeep of their kitchen, just like we do, they should have to adhere to the strict codes and regulations, just in order to stay in business. According to a recent and not flattering article written in the Free Press, Royal Oak has 109 restaurants, a lot are in the CBD, and would be willing to deliver food to this or any other establishment. Or instead of bringing in a food truck, they have these kitchenless establishments, hire a runner who can pick up food from other Royal Oak restaurants. They could also utilize Uber Eats, Grubhub, Restaurant Connection, or DoorDash. And if time constraints are an issue, there are quick-serve restaurants, sorry, that are here as well, such as Noodles, Qdoba, Leo's, Bookies, Second Street, Little Brothers, Comet Burger, and Blaze Pizza. All of these are tax-paying establishments, not carrying the benefits of a liquor license, yet still bearing high rent, utilities, and taxes. Why wouldn't, why would, why wouldn't we want to offer these businesses this extra patronage? With the influx of outside and underpriced liquor licenses that have been transferred into the CBD by the city commission due to changes in state regulation, this ordinance change will open the door for private property to possibly be used in this way, and even quite possibly in a way that this commission didn't plan on being used at all. We would like to ask this body to take a moment, and consider if this is the plan and direction for growth and development that you see for Royal Oak as we move forward. We do not object to special event permits, including food trucks, being properly secured and paid for on a case-by-case basis, but not as an everyday way of doing business. Perhaps in the future, when and if all the brick-and-mortar establishments are at capacity, with guests waiting for seats, this would make sense, but not given the firemen-
Man, it's been, it's been three minutes, so-
Okay, I'm all done, done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi.
Your name, sir?
John Preple.
I'm sorry, your last name?
P-R-E-P-O-L-E-C. I'm the owner of Mr. B's. And Johnny's speakeasy. You know, there's two points I'd like to bring up to planning commission. One is the relationship of market saturation versus demand, and right now, Royal Oak is clearly in an environment where there is a greater capacity in our city than there is market demand. We're seeing that straight across the board with businesses, and declining sales in the restaurant and bar industry. And, you know, I'm a supporter of competition, but when you have more capacity in a marketplace, then you have demand. To continue to add competition and capacity really doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm Detroit, lived through that devastatingly during the 80s and 90s, when there was so much capacity in the automotive industry worldwide, and the net result is, we shut down Buick, we shut down Oldsmobile. This city was devastated. And right now, Royal Oak has an incredible capacity for food and alcohol, and for us to increase that capacity in the face of a market that's not growing right now, because of competition around the city, it doesn't make good economic sense. And I really would appreciate the planning commission taking that into consideration before we consider proposals that would open the door to greater capacity in this marketplace. The second point I'd like to make is that food trucks are passe. I went online today, and the great food truck race show on Food Network was started 10 years ago. Food trucks were cool 10 years ago. Food trucks are no longer cool. This city, I believe, would be best served with a greater sense of what the market feels is contemporary and cool today. If you look at communities around us, like Hazel Park, which is an upstart, why do people go to Hazel Park? Hazel Park is not a terribly desirable environment. They go there because of Mabel Gray and Joe Bar, period. The restaurants go there because of low rent. Nobody would ever go to Hazel Park to eat dinner, if it wasn't for Mabel Gray and Joe Bar. If you go to Ferndale, and you go to The Voyager, or if you go to Otis Supply, people go there, because these are cool places with cool artisan products, with chefs that are creating things that people want to flock to. We need to focus our strategic plan on finding these cool artisan products to bring to our city. Bringing in food trucks, bringing in Buffalo Wild Wings, bringing in Taco Bell, is not the solution to bringing a greater reputation and building a market in Royal Oak.
Sir, it's been three minutes.
Kat and Charlie Pumpkin are-
Sir, it's been three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that, appreciate your comments. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the side of the table. Any reaction, comments?
I'd just like to thank you guys for coming out and expressing your opinion, I know it's, I don't want to say I kind of understand where you were probably going to be coming from. You know, I just want to take a little bit of time, because, at least for me, this is my neighborhood along Fourth Street, and so, the feedback that I've been receiving from residents, in particular, I mean, to the tune of dozens, that patronize these artisan places on Fourth Street, right? So, when we talk about the distillery, we talk about the brewery, these are two Royal Oak establishments, born and raised in Royal Oak, the owners live in Royal Oak, they live in the neighborhoods, they serve the neighborhood. If you look at the patrons there, they're bringing in lots of locals during the week, and they're bringing a tremendous amount of people through their craft product from outside of Royal Oak, just like Chef Johnny was talking about. You know, the, these are businesses that are growing and bringing people into our city. You know, and, and I think that we can't ignore the fact that people do love food trucks, I think we all agree, we don't want to see proliferation anywhere in the city, because we do want to make sure we manage that, but we also want to make sure that, you know, on Fourth Street, where we have this artistic district kind of blossoming, that, you know, that these businesses can continue to survive as well, and if a few nights a week, they need to have a food truck to kind of complement the product that they're selling, and, and foster growth for their businesses, I think is something that the, the commission needs to, to consider, because, you know, it's, it's, there are other businesses, there are other residents in the community that, that do see and are bullish and optimistic on the Fourth Street corridor. I don't know, I mean, I think personally, for me, I don't want to see, I, I do kind of agree, food trucks are a little bit passe, but at the same time, I think having a place that serves liquor and not food, if they want an opportunity to serve some food during a Friday, Saturday night, and, and make it easy, I don't believe that those patrons aren't going to not, you know, go to another establishment, because somebody's, you know, selling french fries out of a truck. Maybe, but I'd also argue that these folks have also brought in a tremendous amount of business for the entire downtown as well. But I also think, too, it's a little bit burdensome to have someone do a special event permit for our city- permit for our city every single, you know, time they want to do something. So, for me, what is that right balance of making sure we don't have proliferation, but at the same time, you know, we allow a part of the community to grow a little bit more, which would be the Fourth Street corridor, and blossom, and attract, and bring even more people into our entire downtown? So, that's where my head's at. I don't want you to think that your comments aren't discounted in any way whatsoever, but I think there's always, you know, another perspective as well. And in this case, from, you know, some of the Fourth Street business owners, as well as, you know, a lot of residents in that area. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Casada?
Question. Why are we in seven-seven-zero dash four-two, requiring that to be used as accessory, the establishment has to have a liquor license but no kitchen? I mean, are they the only, where does that, does that come from these specific petitioners? Because what if a grocery store wanted to have a food truck in the parking lot? Which might make sense. Why the liquor requirement?
I think that has a lot to do with, again, trying to make sure that, there's got to be some conditions in place that merit a food truck. One being, we're not just trying to throw random mobile restaurants out there to saturate the market, rather, there's a, there's a need in a particular area, let's say on Fourth Street, where there is private land available, it's not on public land, as well as a safety element, that if you're serving alcohol, you know, is there, if, if the proprietor of that business decides to, you know, have a, have a food truck in the area to help with patrons who may be consuming alcohol, I think that's really what, what the drive was as a governor to that.
Okay.
Because I think if you did it the other way, you could have any number of, if you're a law firm in town, and you wanted to have a food truck on Friday night, that would be...
If you're hungry enough, yeah, it might work.
That would be, that would be terrible in, in some regards, if everybody that owns a square of land in downtown Royal Oak just popped up a food truck. I think we were trying to avoid that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a real possibility. I, I know you're being facetious there, but I, I'm just trying to understand, again, I asked the question at the outset. In order to write an ordinance, you usually have a defined problem. You say, here's our problem, we gotta fix it. And that's why I asked the question. But I'll make some comments here, specifically as to that. What I, what, as a, as a planning commissioner, who may be asked to make a decision, to make a vote, I haven't heard from the, except for the mayor, I haven't heard from anybody who has a stake in this issue, come to the, come to the table here and tell me why this is necessary. So I'm a little dubious about voting for something that I, I really don't know, I really feel uncomfortable about what the driving force is. On the other hand, I'm going to support what the mayor said. I think new business models, I think variety, I think are, are things that we want to promote. I love Lily's, and I love Mr. B's. I have to tell you, I don't think a food truck down the street is gonna, I don't think they have any unfair competition. Their restaurant's open all the time. I don't think you're gonna be hurt by that. But I, I, I'm just a little perplexed by the whole thing, and I'm just a little uncomfortable with, I don't think it's studied enough, and I don't think I understand it enough, just being honest.
Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, I, the, the way the ordinance is written as it stands, it seems tailored to be very specific and exclusive. I think if we're looking to do something where we had special land use in the CBD for food trucks, limiting it to establishments with just liquor licenses, I, I don't know if that's, that's the right approach for a zoning ordinance, that's for the whole city or for the whole, the whole central business district. So I, again, I kind of echo Mr. Casada's statements, that the, it seems to be solving a problem that isn't necessarily there. And so, as it's, as it's written, I don't, I don't feel comfortable supporting it either.
I agree. I, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with this, too. I'm not uncomfortable with food trucks, and I'm not, I, I really am endeared to what the mayor said about the development of Fourth Street, and I'm curious about where it's going to go to. And I sympathize with the need to perhaps make some changes or, or help with that, but I'm not so sure this is the right solution to do that right now, anyway. We are missing a couple of commissioners, and I'd like to hear their opinion as well, Shar Douglas and Dan Godak. So, not to kick the can down the road again, but I'm just not, I'm feeling a little uneasy about this, too, right, right now, anyway. Mayor?
Yeah, I think, I mean, in, in my opinion, it's, you know, there's no optimal way or tools to say, look, we want to try something on Fourth Street to put some energy into it without, you know, making modifications, because either you open up the floodgates or you don't. And I think that this was an attempt to say, look, yeah, it's a little wonky in the placement, but it's, we don't want, we want to look at one food truck, maybe in that general vicinity, not, you know, fifty. And I think that's, you know, the complexity that comes with that. I think the problem, is there a problem to be solved? Well, I mean, not everything's a problem. Sometimes things are opportunities that we're looking to work with. Here, we've given conditional rezonings for, you know, condominiums and all these things, because those are opportunities. It's not a problem, you know, but it's a, it's an opportunity. And I think here, in that context, try, again, trying to figure out what's the best way to move forward without proliferation, but also putting a little energy into the Fourth Street corridor as it's, you know, demanded by the local residents in that area to, to get something interesting in that area. Because I agree, I don't think, I mean, I, I've expressed my personal opinion, I don't, I don't want to see food trucks all over Royal Oak, especially in the central business district. But I think complimenting some businesses on Fourth Street for the great products they already sell can only grow and boost interest in our city and bring more people to the community. So, but how you do that, I mean, it looks like this is the, the best approach that Planning could think of to, to put in front of us to achieve those ends.
I, I also, another thing Mr. Casada said that is causing me some curiosity is where are the facility owners or operators who are interested in this? They're not here tonight. I'd like to hear from them. I'm curious, you know, you're...
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a good, I mean, I'm not in communication with them other than, in the beginning, we were petitioned, and we, we brought some representatives in from the Restaurant Association to talk to them as well, and bounce some ideas around, but I don't know that, I mean, it's not a, it's not my drive, it's a, you know, some residents.
Okay.
And some business owners asked about it, and we said, okay, well, let's see what, you know, if we were to do something, what it would look like, and what would the Planning Commission say, so I can't speak to them. But it might be worth reaching out to them and seeing if they want to offer their input as well.
And another thing that I think Liz brought up, and, and I'm not going to sit here and pretend to solve these problems, but I'm curious why these owners aren't looking at potential partnerships with some food providers that are already established that could, they could have a partnership with the distillery and one or two or five restaurants to participate in some, you know, food exchanges or something like that, you know?
I think, I think the feedback we got is they tried that, and it just wasn't successful.
Okay.
They couldn't get the reliability, or there were some issues on their end, you know, with serving and, and ordering. But I, I, I think they try to promote, to the extent that they can, you know, local restaurants all the time.
Any other questions, or is there any type of motion, or do, are we looking at another postponement?
Should we postpone and see if we hear back from the people that would be most impacted by it? Maybe send a, give a call to the Fourth Street folks and say, hey, you know, maybe they're probably not paying attention to the agenda all the time, so...
It's a pleasure, pleasure of the commission. Mr. Klooster, Mr. Casada, thoughts?
If we're gonna further discuss this, yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, my, my drive to discuss postponement would be, because we're in such a short commission tonight, I think it makes sense to make sure that we have a full breadth of input from the commission.
Tim, do we need a motion to, to postpone this?
Yes.
And then, I'd close the public hearing again, so if, if, or when we bring it back...
Well, you can take public comment again on it when it comes back.
Okay.
If you want me to invite some property owners on Fourth Street or business owners, I can do that, or reach out to them and invite them, and they can have commentary. The difference with the public hearing is we're not given notice, I'm not posting anything.
Okay.
So I wouldn't call it necessarily a public hearing, but...
We can receive public comments.
You can have comments, as you do on all your items.
Okay. Okay, do you need a motion to postpone?
Yeah, I would ask you postpone.
Is there, is there a motion? Mr. Casada?
Move to postpone the discussion on the text amendments to the zoning ordinance for food trucks and temporary or transient outdoor sales.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, so motion's been made and supported to postpone this. Would it be just to the next meeting?
September.
September meeting, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, it's been postponed to the next meeting, September, if you want to come back. Okay. Okay, moving on to item E. This is new business, and this is a public hearing. It's a special land use and site plan to construct a one-story expansion of cardiovascular center for, for Beaumont Hospital at thirty-six-zero-one West Thirteen Mile. Mr. Twing?
Well, you do have a copy of the staff report for your review in the packet and on the agenda. This site is zoned office service, and in that district, hospitals, outpatient medical clinics are special land uses. So that's why you have the special land use report in front of you this evening. As you indicated, they're proposing a one-story addition. It's basically located between the East and North Tower and a little alcove that you can see on your site plans, the location. It's approximately seventy-five feet by eighty feet, in terms of the area being filled in, or a little over six thousand square feet. Other than that, there are no changes to the site proposed in terms of pedestrian or vehicle access or things like that. There's no screening or landscaping requirement, as it's surrounded by other buildings and uses. So you'll see in the staff site plan memo, it's basically our standard contingencies regarding lighting, signage, and compliance with building codes and things. So, pretty straightforward, but it exceeded staff's ability to administratively deal with.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Twing on the special land use with the site plan? Not seeing any. Is the petitioner here? What's your name, sir?
Ron Herzog, I'm with the architectural firm, Arlay Los Deveraux. And we're drawing up the plans for the one-story addition.
Okay. Any, anything further, other than Mr.?
No, we're, we're adding over the existing basement. There's a floor below that you don't see, it's covered with stone right now and gravel. And we're just adding vertically up one floor.
Okay.
We can't go any higher, because we have patients' windows right below the roof line, so we're very limited here. And we're going to renovate a portion on the inside, which right now has other functions, be right adjacent to the new addition.
Okay.
Allow the hospital to form a new service that they don't currently have for heart patients.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Not seeing, this is a public hearing, so if you just have a seat, I'll open the public hearing?
Sure.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this special land use or site plan? Okay, seeing we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any further questions, comments, or a motion?
There'd be two motions, one for the special land use and then one on the site plan.
Okay.
Motion to approve the special land use?
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Special land use is approved. And now onto the site plan. Anything else, Mr. Twing?
No.
Okay, is there a motion on this site plan?
Motion to approve the site plan?
Is there support?
That's, approve the site plan with the four contingencies.
Correct.
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Any discussion on this motion? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're approved? Thank you. Okay, other business. This is a sign variance request to install freestanding signs and banners on construction fence surrounding the perimeter of a mixed-use development at twenty-five thousand Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing?
This is the Singh Development, down at the six-ninety-six property. What they're basically requesting is the installation of three freestanding signs that do comply with sign ordinance requirements. What kicks it out of compliance is the construction fencing that is also, in closing the site, they would like to propose the banners similar to what is out front for the Central Park Development Group enclosure. Banner signage is a prohibited type of signage, as well as it's being treated as a separate freestanding sign. So they exceed the square footage, is based on the numbers listed in the report, as well as the more than one freestanding sign, and then again, the banners are not a prohibited type of sign. That's the basic request.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions? Mayor?
I mean, we're just talking about temporary construction banners going around the lot that have a advertising element.
Correct. The three signs that are up are really advertising real estate-type signs, and then the banner sign going around is a dual purpose in screening the site as well as advertising or verbiage on it.
Similar to what we did out here.
Yeah, exactly what you did out here.
Exactly what we did, just different, right.
Just different sizes.
I mean, I'll just say, I'm kind of a fan, when projects go up, to see these sort of things, to let people know what's coming to the community, and, you know, I think it's not only good for the developer, but it's also good for people interested in the property, but it's also good for everybody else in the community to know what's going on and what to look forward to, so. You're here, if you want to hear from them.
Do you have anything to add? Petitioner?
Frank Lambert, ideation, nothing else to add.
Okay.
However, we were granted a permit for the development signs on seven-sixteen.
Yeah, the three signs that are up are...
Yeah, they're up, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that, but...
Nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion or any more questions? Mr. Casada?
Well, I just want to make a comment here. This is a signed variance that we're granting. We did grant the one out here for the, for the, you can call them advertising banners, that's really what they are. And to me, if I recall correctly, that's the first one we ever did, and I have to say, I've walked around there, and people are looking at them, and they're responding to them, and they probably look better than just a green or a blue, you know, barrier. We might want to consider the fact that this does set a precedent. We've obviously set a precedent, and we obviously like our precedent, because I think, for me anyways, I'm inclined to say they should do it over at the Singh property, too. Worked it over here, and people liked it, probably work over there, and people will like it. But it does set something of a precedent, we might want to consider the fact that it's a special circumstance for a temporary sign. It lasts a long time, you, you, and there are significant barriers there to keep people out. It's kind of unique. I don't know if we need to adjust the ordinance, but we might want to consider that. But for this instance, I think that the benefits far outweigh the detriment, so I would be in favor of granting the variance.
Is there a motion, Mr. Casada?
I move to grant the signed variance as requested.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any further discussion?
Just add, great project, great sign.
I love the sign, too. I like what's going on out here. I think it's, not only is it attractive and it's inform... I think it's, not only is it attractive and it's informative, but I think it's a safety issue too. It helps with dust, and I think it's a good thing. So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Approved. Okay, moving...
Ideation does great work, though.
Moving on to the five-year review of the master plan, I will say that this was moved by Sharr Douglas and supported by Dan Godak to postpone this to, this evening. These of them are here. So, I just wanted to bring that up. I was, I had thought that it was Sharr that wanted to postpone this, so I read the minutes, and that is correct. But is there, do you want to make a presentation, Mr. Twing?
No, I think we, we did present it previously.
Okay.
It was, it was, I thought, when we did present it to the Planning Commission, you wanted more time to consider it. From my standpoint, there is no rush to, to deal with this. I would rather you feel comfortable with it. And if you want the more complete or fuller body here to, to deal with it, holding it back for one more month is not any issue from my standpoint. What this will do is, is there is, you've already taken one action, you'll see there's two resolutions in there, and there's one that's already been adopted, talking about the master plan going forward, and we've kind of been setting on that action. You might consider rescinding that prior action, because I, I don't believe the Planning Commission does want to go forward, but if you don't, you want to wait for the rest of the body, that's fine too. What will happen, once you deal with it, we're going to take it to the City Commission for their concurrence, and actually, they've, they've assigned some budgets to redoing the master plan for this fiscal year. And once those two actions occur by the Planning Commission and the City Commission, we'll put an RFP together to hire a consultant to make the master plan revisions and start that process. So the delay just is delaying that process, so...
If we were to move to, for the Resolution 1 and delay Resolution 2, would it still delay the City Commission? Do you need all of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, so there's no rush to do either one of them.
Okay.
There is a standing motion that you've already adopted, that we just aren't implementing.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear for the public, where you did make a motion to do something, and based on your joint meeting with the City Commission, to my understanding, you were going to go a different direction.
Right.
So we've not done anything, but that other motion is still floating out there.
Okay, yeah, I remember that. Okay, Mr. Casada?
I just wanted to say, even though we're, we're not going to have a full discussion of this, I'm sure, today, but I looked at the resolution, the only comments that I, the Resolution Number 2, to move forward with a, with a targeted master plan update amendment, the only issue that I saw is that this is an iterative process between the, you know, the population, the, you know, the special consultant, the City Commission, the Planning Commission, and I think it, well, you can have an outline here of what the areas where the amendment might address. I think we need to be open to the fact that during that iterative process, you're going to churn up ideas, and I do, just like some languages, this is not, we're not recommending to be limited to what's listed here. Limited but not, you know, or including but not limited to, or, this is not an exhaustive list, because during the process, there will be ideas that come up that are valid, and I don't know if that would restrict us, this particular language, but I wouldn't want to be restricted, that's my point.
Okay, thank you.
And if we want to make, what would we do now, that we make a motion to postpone this as well?
I believe you did last time. What I would point out in your, to your commentary is the, one of the bullet points was, one of the first things to happen on, basically the top of page two, it says, "Conduct public meetings to gather input on sections of the master plan. To be amended is identified by the Planning Commission and City Commission to determine if other sections of the master plan should also be identified." So that's one of the first steps the consultant would do, would be to get to your comment about not being limited to these. But I think, given the joint meeting, it was our thought that these were the sections that these two bodies identified.
They, they are, but I'm just saying, when we make this resolution, then we get a consultant, then the consultant holds a meeting, and at that meeting, you can bet at a pizza pie that something's going to come up where you say, you know what, that's a great idea, we need to look at that. So, that's all. I didn't want it to be restricted either by expectation or legally by the language here.
It's a pleasure of the commission for this particular item this evening.
I think we should move the Dan and Sheriff to buy us dinner next time, because we would postpone it, I would move to postpone it.
Move for them to buy us dinner?
Both.
Dinner perk's probably not part of the Planning Enabling Act, but the postponement might be. Okay, so that's a motion, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Casada, and then support by Mr. Klooster to postpone this to the September meeting. I like that idea, I think it's appropriate. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the last item on our agenda is, well, second to last, is administrative site plan approvals. Anything on here, Mr. Twing, that you...
No, but just for your information, those are the ones that we've dealt with administratively.
Any questions about this for Mr. Twing?
No.
Okay. Then, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:00.
No discussion?